Welcome to the first board meeting for 2025. Welcome to those in the room and also watching us via YouTube. It's great to be back in school, to have students and staff back in the buildings today. And there are lots of people who deserve thanks for making that happen. And we will do some of that actually this evening during the meeting. So, thank you for coming tonight. And Ms. Beam, will you start with the roll call?
Sure. Mr. Babbitt?
Here.
Mr. Boyd?
Here.
Mrs. Johann?
Here.
Mr. Kuhn?
Here.
Mrs. Reagan?
Here.
Mrs. Steele?
Here.
Dr. Yurkovich?
Here.
At this time, I would invite Haley Pham to come forwards. Haley's a student at Olathe, a senior at Olathe Northwest High School. And she's going to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance this evening.
The Pledge of Allegiance. To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Best of luck to Haley as she finishes her senior year. And I had an opportunity to chat with her a little bit before the meeting. She plans to attend Johnson County Community College next year.
Johann?
Yes.
Motion passed, seven zero. Recognitions and awards, Ms. Gruboff.
Good evening. To start off our recognitions tonight, I would like to invite up the members of our Olathe Public Schools gymnastics team, along with Coach Amanda Harrington, District Athletic Director Matt Johnson, and Olathe North Assistant Principal Jennifer Notboom. This fall, our Olathe North gymnastics team once again claimed the state championship title, their fourth time to do so in four years. This year, they clinched the state title with a record-breaking performance. The team broke a record score set by Derby in the 90s with an overall team score of 112.2. Four of the team's gymnasts placed within the all-around top 10, with two gymnasts earning first-place spots. Sophomore Sophia Beaumont took first in the vault, bars, beam, and all-around categories, and she tied for first in the floor category with fellow teammate Emmy Keller. In addition, they were unable to join us tonight, but we're here to recognize them. In addition, we are proud to honor Coach Amanda Harrington tonight, who was recently named as the Girls' Gymnastics Coach of the Year for Section 5 by the Kansas Coaches Association, the Kansas State High School Athletics Association, and the National Federation of State High School Associations. Please join me in congratulating these outstanding athletes and coaches on their accomplishments. Next, I would like to invite our educators who recently earned or maintained their National Board certification, along with District Science Coordinator Julie Miller and Principals Jason Watkins and Jamie Veach. Come on up to the front. National Board certification is often recognized as the most respected professional certification available in education and is one of the highest levels of achievement in education. It was designed to develop, retain, and recognize accomplished teachers and to generate ongoing improvement in schools nationwide. Tonight, we are proud to recognize teachers who earned their National Board certification in 2023 and 2024, as well as several teachers who renewed or maintained their certification. Kayla Rasmussen is a Ravenwood Elementary CBR teacher, and she earned her certification in the Exceptional Needs Specialist Early Childhood through Young Adulthood category. Beth Pope is a Forest View Elementary 5th grade teacher, and she maintained her certification in the Generalist Middle Childhood category. And Nancy Smith, a Heatherstone Elementary 1st grade teacher, maintained her certification in the Literacy Reading Language Arts Early and Middle Childhood category. And unable to join us tonight is Meg Shadid and Julia Wenzel-Heguli. They weren't able to join us tonight due to the weather, but they also received their certifications. So, please join me in congratulating these outstanding teachers. Okay. Yay! Next, I would like to invite Julie Fishburne, District Social Studies Coordinator, to the front, along with Director of Curriculum and Instructional Support Kelly Tynes. Earlier this year, Julie was awarded the 2024 Liberty Bell Award by the Johnson County Bar Association for her work with the 3rd Grade Mock Trial Program. The Liberty Bell Award is given to a non-lawyer for outstanding service in one of the following areas: promoting a better understanding of the Constitution and the Bill of Rights, encouraging greater respect for law and the courts, stimulating a deeper sense of individual responsibility so that citizens recognize their duties as well as their rights, contributing to the effective functioning of government institutions, and fostering a better understanding of the rule of law. The 3rd Grade Mock Trial Program began with 3rd graders at Forest View Elementary 10 years ago. Last year, Julie spearheaded the efforts to expand this program to all 3rd grade classrooms in Olathe, and this year, she helped lead the monumental task of expanding the program statewide. Through this program, students make connections with the 3rd Grade Social Studies content by learning about their community and the civic duties that people perform, such as following the law, showing respect for others, and even serving on a jury. They learn about the court system, the branches of government, and the Constitution of the United States. Thanks to Julie's efforts, there were over 13,000 students from 542 classrooms across the state who attended this year's mock trial event. Please join me in recognizing Julie for this tremendous effort and her well-deserved Liberty Bell Honor. And last but not least, I would like to invite Dr. Jaeger to the podium for a special recognition.
Well, good evening, everyone. Tonight, I have the distinct honor of recognizing seven individuals who dedicate countless hours, endless energy, and drink probably more free coffee than you want, to help our school district, our Board of Education. January is Board of Education Appreciation Month. And let's be honest, we do have a tremendous board who really is the best. These seven community leaders, who are former educators, former Olathe employees, current parents, grandparents, and all-around superheroes, play a crucial role in the success of our district each and every day. They're not just instrumental, they are the full orchestra. You tell I didn't write that part. You're the full orchestra when it comes to making our district excel. On behalf of myself, our staff, our students, our families, and the Olathe community, thank you for your unwavering commitment to the Olathe Public Schools. Your support is essential to the excellence we continue to see in our schools and expect as a community. A heartfelt thank you to Dr. Stacy Yurkovich, Julie Steele, Will Babbitt, Brad Boyd, Becky Johann, and Claire Reagan for everything you do. You are truly the best of the best. Finally, will you all please...
And also Robert.
Oh, and Robert, sorry. I do this one time a year, and I mess it up. Rewind, Tony, wherever you are. A heartfelt thank you to Dr. Stacy Yurkovich, Julie Steele, Will Babbitt, Brad Boyd, Becky Johann, Robert Kuhn, and Claire Reagan for everything that you do. You are the best of the best. Will you all please finally join me in a round of applause for our incredible Board Mr. Kuhn, I'm really thankful you're here tonight. Thank you.
So, this evening, we have a few informational presentations. And before the first one, which is related to the change in bell schedules this year, Dr. Jaeger is going to make a few comments.
Yeah, thank you. One of the things that we know is important is to go back and just share how significant changes that we're making across our system, or we've made across our system, are impacting our schools, our staff, and our communities. So, tonight, I'm really pleased that we have three principals, along with our general administration, staff members, who are just going to kind of provide an update by level of how it's going. Certainly, they're going to share the positive things. I think they'll also share some things that continue to be just a little bit of a challenge here and there. But I also want to be clear that the conversation tonight's really not our intent to reevaluate the decision in terms of our schedule change. It's really just an intent to give you all an update, give you the ability to ask some questions to GA and also our principals who are here, just so we all have an understanding of how the schedule adjustment has gone across our system. So, with that, I think one of the GA members will probably step up and get us going.
Well, elementary always seems to get to go first, so...
Will you do me a favor and make sure you're looking at Mr. Kuhn while you're doing his presentation tonight?
Yes. I am really thankful you're on the board. Thank you. Dedicated service, for sure. And it helps, you know, that I get to go after Dr. Jaeger's little flub there, too. So, that helps me a little bit, too. So, we have Dr. Todd Wheat from Greensprings Elementary School, the honored principal that's there. And so, he'll be sharing a little bit about elementary. I did want to let you know, too, that if you have any questions about early childhood, you have to also remember that our early childhood centers start at two different times. So, Heartland and Harmony are on a little bit different schedule. And so, thank you to Dr. Kim Hawkins for, you know, navigating that, because it changes their professional development a little bit. It changes their start and end time for both of those centers, too. Before we kick off, too, we wanted to give a little bit of an appreciation to Johnson County Parkson Recreation that provides our childcare service. And Dr. Liz Harrison facilitates that with JCPairedee, so we wanted to give a shout-out to them, and she has some information about that.
Good evening. So, we just wanted to give them a big shout-out through their partnership last fall, over the summer, all last year, over the summer, and then this year. They are able to provide care for 400 more in the AM and more than 100 more in the PM compared to last year. And the wait lists this year compared to this time last year are significantly smaller. And that has been an ongoing effort of them to try to increase their staff and to try to meet that need, to make sure that when we had those schedule changes, especially with that larger time in the morning, we were able to meet it. And it's amazing to look at the numbers. So, we just really wanted to say thank you to them, because that's been a lot of work over several months. So, Ms. Dr. Wheat?
All right. Thank you very much, Dr. Smith, Dr. Harrison, Board of Education, Mr. Kuhn. I've been tasked with giving a little bit of an update on the elementary portion of our new schedule. Just to kind of start things, I wanted to give a quick little overview of some of the primary changes that have impacted elementary first. So, first of all, our instructional day went from 8:20, or started at 8:20 in the past and is now, it starts at 8:55. The end of our instructional day went from 3:40 and now concludes at 3:55. We transitioned from an A through E rotation for specials like music, library, and art and PE to an A through D rotation schedule. We went from a 7-hour and 20-minute day to a 7-hour day, so we'd be commensurate with middle and high school as well. And then, our certified contracts used to be 8:00 AM to 4:00 PM, but to adjust to the new instructional day, that was changed to 8:15 to 4:15 PM. So, same amount for the contracts, just different start and end times. So, in addition to those changes, there was also a change in the language to our negotiated agreement, which is requiring all certified teaching staff at the elementary level to have a minimum of 300 minutes of planned time per week, which is up from 270 minutes per week previously. The new elementary schedules created several positive opportunities. And of course, as Dr. Jaeger mentioned, there are a few challenges as well, or, excuse me, as Dr. Smith, I think, had mentioned as well. I wanted to highlight just a few of those opportunities as a result of the new elementary schedule. So, first of all, with contracts now beginning at 8:15 AM, the door's not opening until 8:35, and then students not coming back to the classrooms until 8:45 AM, all of our certified staff have additional time to prepare for students in the morning. This block of time has been particularly beneficial for our special education staff, as that's created some additional opportunities for them to collaborate with our general education teachers, and of course, our classified staff, our paraprofessionals that support our students with special needs, that those special educators help supervise so they can make sure that they're ready for each and every day. Later start time also created a natural way for our certified staff to get that 300 minutes of weekly planned time that I had mentioned previously. And then, the transition to an A through D rotation schedule is providing our specialists music, art, PE, and library more contact time to cover their valuable curriculum as well. And I believe that we discovered that it's about 11 additional contact times per year. So, conversely, some of the challenges that we've kind of had to work through a little bit as a result of the new elementary schedule, first and foremost, is the 20 minutes less of instructional time per day. That equates, obviously, to 100 minutes less per week and is 3,400 less minutes per academic year. And 5th grade maybe has felt this more than any other of the elementary grades, because they also have band and strings two to three times per week. And this is coming from the parent of somebody that knows how valuable that instrumental music is for our kids. So, the elementary schools in general have really had to embrace Dr. Jaeger's social media hashtag for this year, which is OPS Make Today Count, and focusing on maximizing the available instructional time that we have, and then keeping students actively engaged in their learning throughout the course of the day as well. So, another challenge is the fact that elementary teachers, well, they're not off contract until 4:15 PM. So, activities such as MathWings and CSI, and I feel like I should clarify that CSI is not crime scene investigation at the elementary level. It's cool science investigations. So, I feel like I just wanted to clarify that for everybody. But we also have those monthly staff meetings, building leadership team meetings taking place after school would mean that some of our teachers' day is not finishing until 5:00, 5:15 PM. I think that's particularly tough at this time of year when they're leaving school and it's already dark outside. However, that being said, many of our schools have actually kind of turned that challenge into an opportunity. So, with that later start time, there's now more time in the morning to have some of these activities and these meetings as well. And this not only gets our elementary staff and students out at a reasonable time in the afternoon, it's also kind of nice that our brains are still fresh at that time of day. And we actually have our MathWings sponsor back there, Ms. Gruboff, who's a 3rd grade teacher at Greensprings Elementary. And she is hosting MathWings before school once a week. And so, we've been able to take advantage of that opportunity as well. And she's awesome. So, all in all, I do feel like that the changes at our elementary schedule have been very well-received by our staff and our community. Like any change, there are some growing pains that we're figuring out, but overall, I feel like things are on a very good track right now. So, that's our update for elementary.
Thank you, Dr. Wheat. I know as somebody who travels across three school zones for elementary, I do appreciate the traffic is much less with elementary starting later. I'm here to introduce Scott Appel. He is the principal at Pioneer Trail, and he's here to highlight some of the changes that have taken place at middle school. Mr. Appel?
Thanks, Dr. Waters. Board, thanks for having us. Mr. Kuhn, good to see you. I think I saw you after school as well on drop-off line, so thanks for not hitting me. I kind of follow the same track Dr. Wheat was on, just I'm going to tell you guys about some changes that we've had, that the adjustments have made to our schedule, some of the challenges we're facing, and then some of the positives that we're seeing at the middle school. Our staff contract time changed from 7:30 AM to 3:30 PM to 7:40 AM to 3:40 PM. So, a 10-minute shift a little bit later. Not that much of a difference that we're feeling there. The student instructional day is where we saw a lot of changes for us. Students go to school now from 8:20 AM to 3:20 PM. Students used to go from 7:50 AM to 3:10 PM. And so, students are seeing, we're seeing 20 minutes less instructional minutes per day, but we're also starting 30 minutes later. And so, a little bit of a trade-off there. Another nice thing about the schedule is all 10 of us, all 10 middle schools are now on the same bell schedule, which hasn't happened in quite a few years, just with a few different things we had going on. But that really helps us with our staff, who are split between buildings, our tenor and staff who travel, which a lot of us do have, those staff members who we share. Couple of challenges we have, you know, we lost 20 minutes to our day. Even though I'm a math guy, I didn't go down the deep dig that Dr. Wheat went down with the total number of minutes. You know, we lost those 20 minutes every day. But for us, that ends up being only three minutes per class period, because our day is split up into seven different periods. All the teachers I talked to, they don't feel it that much. The biggest thing they said is that they felt that if anything else, if any more time would have been taken out, they would have been able to feel it. Only teachers that did say that they noticed were our teachers who have labs. So, for instance, culinary materials and processing are PE teachers. When kids had to change for PE, to change into PE, change out of PE, they noticed that, too. Another challenge that we are kind of seeing is our athletic events start a little bit later. And so, we're having some trouble staffing that at some of our buildings, just with our day ending a little bit later. That means that those events are going longer. I know probably for Mr. Novacek, you know, 6:00 PM doesn't sound late. It probably sounds early for him. But for us, 6:00 PM is late for a lot of our teachers who are, again, trying to get home. And so, that's some of our challenges. Some of our positives, we have significantly less students who are late to school every day. And I don't know if that's a testament to the number of our students who have access to buses or to the high school start time being earlier. And our students no longer need to depend on older siblings to get them to school or what it is. But on average, we're only seeing about 10 tardy students per day in our building, and that's from 8:20 to 8:35, so that first 15 minutes of the day. Whereas last year, we were seeing 25 to 35 kids tardy every single day consistently. And a lot of times, you know, we work with those kids, and we talk to them, a lot of times it is, I'm waiting on my brother, I'm waiting on my sister, who is going to the high school. And so, this has been a good change for us in that aspect. Another big thing is the buses. More of our students have access to that transportation piece, so we have less students who are walking, riding bikes, depending on others to get to school. And a big thing, you know, for our students, too, is those buses are arriving on time to pick students up, to pick them up from school and to drop them off at school. I'm no longer getting a text message that says, "Bus 518 is going to be 30 minutes late picking up your students from school today," and trying to figure out what we're going to do with them. And then, I think the biggest thing with the buses for me was, I asked a student what they noticed about the change, and she's a bus rider. She's an 8th grade student, and she said, "I love that I know who my bus driver is this year." It's the same bus driver every single day in the past. Last year, it was usually a sub-driver, and so, the bus number was different on the back than it was on the front where the magnets go. And so, she was like, "I never knew if my bus was actually here. I never knew the driver. Now, my bus driver knows my name." And that just goes a long way in getting her day off to the right start. And then, instructionally, the biggest thing for us is, you know, we have 40 minutes before school now, where we used to only have 20 minutes for between our contract time and the first bell to start today. You know, 20 of those minutes of the day, we limit access to teachers' classrooms, so 20 minutes is dedicated to that teacher prep time. Teachers have stated how this has allowed them more time to lesson prep and routinely collaborate with those colleagues who, in the past, they maybe didn't have the opportunity to meet with us frequently. And we've also developed a schedule for elective teachers at the middle school that allows them to meet five extra times on top of professional development days before school via Zoom or via Teams, where they can meet with their district-wide colleagues who they don't get to see very frequently. It's our, we call them our one-off teachers. You know, we have one band teacher, one Spanish teacher. Allows them five extra times in the year to meet with those colleagues, so they can discuss their content with them. Yeah, I think for us, it's been a really positive change. You know, the challenges, we're managing them and we're going through it, but overall, it's been a really good change for us at the middle school level.
And last, but certainly not least, high school update. Mr. Jay Novacek from Olathe West is here tonight to give you just a brief report on how the change has impacted the high school level. Ours is maybe a little less obvious, because we didn't have an adjustment to instructional minutes. It's simply a sliding of the schedule a little bit. So, it may not be the obvious impact, but Jay's going to talk about some of the maybe less noticeable but still important impacts.
Thank you. I was actually able to speak at the site council on chronic absenteeism, and then I was asked to speak about the bell schedule tonight. So, I feel like I'm becoming a bearded version of Dr. McMullin. So, all the hot topics in Olathe, but I'm happy to be here. I'm really excited about it. I will say this, I feel like this is kind of a role reversal. Usually, the elementary principals are high-energy and excited, and, you know, Todd kind of brought me down a little bit. And high school principals are seen as grumpy. And I got to be honest with you, this change has been awesome for us. I don't ever want to go back, so I'm going to say that upfront. The number-one thing that I would say to you is it's helped us get kids to school. I'm not going to tell you anything you don't know, but, you know, a few years ago, when we were having the busing issue due to the lack of bus drivers, we had to reduce routes because of our schedule between high school, middle school, and elementary. It became very, very challenging for us. And we had kids that ended up walking several miles each day, both to and from school, due to their parents maybe not having cars, or, you know, they had already left and gone to work. And so, there wasn't an opportunity for them to get to school other than walking. They did that, you know, and we actually worked with the Olathe Police Department, did some things like found some abandoned bikes, gave those to kids so that they could ride bikes. All of that works well when it's the fall and it's beautiful, or the spring and it's beautiful. But when you get 10 inches of snow, they really didn't come to school. And it wasn't that they didn't want to, but they can't ride their bike in the snow, they can't walk in the snow, and they really didn't have a way to get there. When you're battling chronic absenteeism, which I just mentioned, you know, that's a real huge challenge for us. So, that 7:40 start allowed us to reintroduce the routes that we had two years ago, and I know Dr. McMullin's going to talk about that a little bit as well. And that has been huge for us. And now, kids have a safe and reliable way to get to school, they're on time, and our data, our attendance data reflects that as well. The second thing I would say is, I know there was concerns about activities before school at the high school, particularly band. And I know my colleague, Mr. Zook, is up next to talk about Olathe Northwest, and, you know, he has a huge and successful band program. And I think there were some concerns there about what that was going to look like. What I will tell you is, our district was proactive. They got portable lights for our bands at all five high schools. As we lost sunlight in the fall, and we're starting at 7 o'clock, we were able to turn on the lights, have our practice as usual, go into first hour, and it was great. One advantage that we learned that we didn't anticipate at Olathe West, we don't have lights. So, having those lights, if we wanted to have an evening practice, we would have had to wait until after soccer or football was over. And, you know, you wait by then, it's almost dark anyway. Now that we have the lights out there, they're able to flip on the lights, have an evening practice. It ended up being a huge thing that we didn't even anticipate. Our band is the biggest band we've ever had in our eight-year history and most successful. So, I'd say that was a huge, huge thing for us as well. so I'd say that was a huge thing for us as well. One of the other things, clubs, there was some concern about whether clubs would not be able to meet before school. One of the things we did was we moved a lot of our clubs into our advisory time. Also a benefit of that is kids that can't be at school early are now able to participate in some of those clubs during the school day with time built in, and that was also a great, great advantage. We still do have our faculty meetings, BLT meetings, site council meetings before school. They used to start at 7:15, now we start them at 7:00. I know Dr. Yurkovich came to my site council meeting last month, I believe it was. She said she felt like she had her principal hat back on because she was there at 7:00 for a meeting. It did not feel that early. I hope you feel that way, and I felt like we got a lot out of that meeting, so I don't think there's a big switch there. Faculty meetings, we'll have a 7:00 a.m. faculty meeting for the early risers, and then we'll repeat it again at 2:40. We're on contract till 3:15. You know, if you have daycare things in the morning and you can't make the morning meeting, you can certainly make the afternoon one, and you're on contract from 2:40 to 3:15, and that's been a great thing for us as well. Some other anecdotal things that were unanticipated benefits, my SRO brought this up. You know, rush hour in Latha goes till about 8:30. We're safely in school by 7:40, and we're no longer trying to get kids in during the middle of rush hour, you know, and he's noticed the difference in traffic just around the school. You know, we're not the best drivers, I'll be honest with you. I mean, you know.
You personally?
Well, I will tell you this, that's a good question. We had a sophomore girl, first day of school, total her car in our parking lot, and that was my daughter. First day of school, and so that was an awkward phone call to that parent, but they knew where I worked, so it worked out pretty well for insurance purposes, so I'm sure Jillian's going to love I did that. Parents' schedules, here's another great thing that we have had happen. Parents, their work schedules are still the same. They start at 8 o'clock, okay? So they didn't change. So, they used to drop their kids off at 7:30, we would start school at 8:00. They still drop their kids off at 7:30, but we start at 7:40. So, just the amount of, shall we call it, free time that a lot of our students have, you know, they show up at 7:30 and they head straight to class, which has been great. We, for years, have had kids ask us, "Can I leave school at 2:45 if I have a job at 3:00?" And we have to say no every time. But, parents used to call kids out at 2:45 so they could make their job by 3:00. Again, when you're looking at chronic absenteeism numbers, I have had zero requests from any family or student if I can leave early to get to work, so they're able to get to those 3:00 jobs, which has been great. And lastly, it's just kind of a family deal. It's only 20 minutes, but I will tell you, our coaches and sponsors, when they have things after school, and welcome to my world, Scott, by the way, you know, when we have things after school, it's only 20 minutes, they, you know, if you start a practice at 3:00, or get out of school at 3:00 and you start practice by 3:30, you're getting home after 6:00 every single night for practice. You start, you get out at 2:40, you start at 3:00, people are getting home at 5:30. Our coaches have really, really, really said that they enjoy that. They get to go home, they get to have dinner with their family, help kids with homework, allows our athletes to do some homework, eat with their families, so that's a good thing. Like I said, the 7:40 start has been phenomenal at the high school level. We don't ever want to go back. I just want to tell you that. It's been a great, great thing for our high school. Thank you.
Wow, I'll tell you what. Right, yeah. I'm, whoa. Tell you what, well, Mr. Novacek, I certainly, since you're the bearded Dr. McMullin, I've got some tasks upcoming that I'll be glad to send your way, no doubt. But, now, just to wrap this up, just kind of some transportation information from our partners, and really a shout-out to DS Bus Lines and to Assisted Transportation. They have adjusted to the schedule as well, because certainly that was a change in report times and work hours for both of those groups, and they've both just been great to work with. On the DS Bus Line side, I'm pleased to report that their strategic focus on recruiting has paid off. Can tell you, our total routes this year for our DS Bus Line buses is right about the same. We went from 143 to 142 total routes, gen ed and sped. Where we saw a great increase was in the number of drivers. Last year, we finished with 129 drivers. We currently have 148 drivers at DS. So that puts us at kind of 4% over our staffing percentage, so essentially they're starting each day with six additional drivers who can help cover for call-ins and sick, et cetera. It's also allowed us to continue to add routes as we continue to grow our drivers, so that some of those larger routes that are longer, been able to add another 21st century route to reduce the ride time in one instance, and then also some of the buses that had just really packed routes, we've been able to add a second one. So, really good news there. We've ended, we're currently at 20 single routes, 74 doubles, and 48 triples. And of course, the 48 triples is obviously new to our system this year, having the three-tier system, and so it's been extremely efficient for us. The other piece that I'm going to share, and certainly something that we maybe look forward to sharing more towards once we get through the entire year, but we've implemented a PBIS system in partnership with our school buildings and with our transportation partners, where we've got positive behavior rewards going on on transportation, and our early data is just phenomenal. I'm hopeful that our yearly data stays where it is now, but if you're looking at August, October, from last year to this year, our gen ed behavior incidents have decreased by 46%, and that is significant. Our special education buses have also decreased by 11%. So, we've seen really good benefits from the PBIS program that we've implemented with our transportation partners, and kudos to them. They were a part of the planning process with Olivia Malone, our Director of Transportation, and it's really been a great success for us. And then, as you know, you know, with going to the three-tier system, we've been able to, as Mr. Novacek alluded to, reinstate the secondary pay ride, which has been obviously very well received by our families, 21st century busing. And as Mr. Appel noted, the one thing that was really challenging for us last year was our inability to support our buildings when we knew a bus was going to be 30 minutes late every day to pick kids up. And on a one-time occurrence, that's okay, it's doable. When it's every day and you're trying to figure out what to do with 43 middle school students for 30 minutes after school, you know, it's certainly a challenge, so. And really, kind of the final anecdotal piece is just feedback from Latha Police Department, and you talk about unintended consequences. You know, this change has greatly impacted the traffic pattern in Latha. And as you know, so many of our, we have areas where we have high schools and middle schools next to each other, or in close proximity, and to have those spread out in this three-tier system has just been tremendous. Also, I've heard from parents who have kids at multiple levels, and it's so much easier for them to pick up a high school kiddo and then a middle school kiddo than what it used to be when it was a 10-minute differential. So, some great positives on the transportation side, so. I don't have anything more entertaining to share than that, so certainly we'd be happy to answer any questions, and we can pull up, back up any of the principals if you'd like, or any of the GA folks.
Hi, Dr. McMullin. I know this has been such a heavy lift and just getting it off the ground, so thank you to you for all of your leadership on it, and to our building leadership for helping see it through. I was curious about what the pulling of kids out of school for sports and activities looks like now with this change, because I know that was a consideration when we were having all of these discussions.
Yeah, absolutely. So, kind of twofold there. It's certainly allowed for a more timely pickup, and really, the reality is, and I think our high school folks will tell you this, when we go to Lawrence, kids are still going to leave class earlier. Now, they're not leaving quite as early, and then also with them dismissing 20 minutes earlier, they're missing less class time. So, a trip to Lawrence many times is still going to be a 1:30, you know, exit, but now that's only an hour and 10 minutes before school gets out versus an hour and a half. And so, that's, we've certainly seen a great, great increase there, but the biggest piece is the timeliness of them now has greatly improved.
So, I think what is so kind of almost, I don't know if thrilling is too strong of a word, but is so validating about this is, we started this process thinking of kids and what was best for our students. And we're kind of wrapping up this first semester experiment, thinking we knew that things would get better. And now it's so validating that it is getting better, and it's still about the kids, and that is so, so wonderful to hear. And I think my favorite thing is Mr. Appel saying that the consistency of the driver has meant a lot. And then the reduction in behavior issues. We are starting students' days off better, and that is so validating. So, you have put a ton of work into this. Thank you very much, but thank you also to our community and to our parents. It was a big change for you all at home to make these adjustments, and I know some families still are making these adjustments, but I hope what you've heard tonight is beneficial to you to realize that this really has been better for all, so, thank you.
Anyone else, board? I'll just add my thank you to the principals who are here this evening, additional time away from family, and appreciate not only the information and the positive approach, but as you talked about, there have been challenges, and your leadership and the leadership of other building administrators has made the difference to work through those as well. So, thank you for that. Thank you for our general administration, superintendents, and Dr. McMullin, and Will Babbitt. Did you have?
I need to say something.
Okay, go.
I just wanted to add one additional thing stacking on with Dr. McMullin. Thank you for all the hard work you and Olivia put into this. But also, I want to thank the prior board before we were on this for, it was a big lift, a big step for you guys to make this very large change. And initially, I was very glad I didn't have to be responsible for it, but now I would like to take credit for it, so if we could just forget and move forward a little bit, so, thank you.
Give Rob credit.
And thank you, and I know this was all from Rob, so, thank you all.
All right, thank you. Any other comments, board? All right, thank you, Dr. McMullin. And our school spotlight, Mr. Zook.
I am Chris Zook, and it's been my honor and privilege to serve Latha Northwest as principal for the past nine years. ONW opened its doors in 2003 under the direction of Dr. Gwen Pos, who led the building for the first 13 years. So in 22 years, ONW has had exactly two principals. Over the past nine years, the student population has fluctuated between 1,800 and 2,250 students, currently sitting at about 1,960 students. I want to preface my additional comments with a caveat that one of my favorite things to do is to brag on the staff, students, and community of Latha Northwest. And so, while I'll try to stay within a reasonable timeframe, I make zero promises from here on out. Again, that aside, my greatest worry in sharing about ONW in a limited timeframe is that a person or a group or an organization will go unmentioned, and that that's not based on the value of that group or organization or person of the building, but just the amount of time, and that there are so many incredible people and facets to our building and to our community. I'd like to thank Haley Pham, senior at ONW, for leading the Pledge of Allegiance this evening. Haley earned her U.S. citizenship last fall, and we felt it was very fitting for her to lead the pledge this evening. The absolute best part about Latha Northwest is our students. Here's a quick video highlighting what it looks like to be a Raven. We want our students to feel valued, heard, and connected. To promote these, Ravens can participate in a number of different groups and organizations. Over the last couple of years, we've seen the emergence of our Black Student Union, Muslim Student Association, Asian Student Union, Raven, and Diversity Leadership Club. These clubs, along with Raven Service Club, Chess Club, Gardening Club, Future Health Professionals Club, and a host of others, promote connection with school and peers. There are a number of things that our community takes pride in, including National Merit Scholars and state championships. During the 2024 calendar year, ONW students and coaches brought home four state championships: girls golf, dance, softball, and girls track and field. A number of coaches earned Coach of the Year designations, and ONW is the home to a recent Evelyn Gates Award winner for volleyball, as well as the current Kenneth Smith Female Golfer Award winner, both recognizing the top athlete in the metro. For the class of 2024, I'm proud to share that ONW has eight National Merit semifinalists. That is the most in the 22-year school history at Latha Northwest, and it was the third most in the state of Kansas this year. Dr. Yager, that was the third most in the state of Kansas this year, just making sure we're. Our new DECA program has performed incredibly over the past, over the first few months of the school year under the direction of Mr. Joe Blake and Ms. Brooke Smith. Just today, they were recognized in the top quarter of all DECA programs nationwide for their membership campaign and their community service campaign. Two longstanding points of pride at ONW are our academies, engineering and e-Communications. Hundreds of students participate in these programs each year. Ecom provides students with hands-on and intensive opportunities in web, graphic design, video, and animation. Engineering Academy functions by connecting engineering classes with science classes. Team 1710, our first robotics team, has competed at the World Championships in Houston for several years. Mr. Andrew Taylor leads this group of about 50 or so students, and their experience is not just about robots or competition, but incorporates community outreach, leadership, fundraising, presentation skills, and a host of others. Debate and forensics have historically been high-performing at ONW. Just this year, Connor Chaffin and Joseph Higgins are 33-1 in their debate event, which is a brand-new school record. Each month, we select a department or group of staff to get a special treat at ONW. Pictured here is one of our paraprofessionals, Aaron, who is holding a paper sack that has beans, hamburgers, seasoning, tomatoes, and crackers to make chili, and then some cinnamon rolls to go along with them. Another department picked up items to make a pancake breakfast at home this fall, and the administrative team took another group out for after-school appetizers. One of our professional development initiatives is a learning-together focus, which is teacher-led. The School Spirit or School Pride Group has initiated a few activities this year, including the staff family tailgate prior to a football game, and a festive Friday pictured here with holiday apparel, followed by a staff happy hour after school. Lastly, we started an ONW staff longevity recognition this year. In our events entrance, a display case holds a plaque for each staff member who has served ONW for at least 15 years. We are proud to share the 41 staff members currently have plaques with their names, years of service, and departments. 33 certified and eight classified staff are celebrated here, including several office staff and three custodians. At ONW, we use the academic intervention or AI period to address a variety of needs. We adjust AI rosters by quarter as needed as students are moved in and out of interventions. This means that no student feels singled out by leaving their AI to walk to an intervention. AI occurs four days a week in the high schools, with two days a week being student-directed so they can go visit teachers that they need to see. so they can go visit teachers that they need to see based on student-identified situations, and then two days are what we would call lesson days. The following slides will highlight some of the enrichment and intervention success we've experienced. Now, none of this would be possible occurring at all without the support of our fantastic staff. We actually have a group of teachers that serves as an advisory team for our academic intervention process. And we continue to share the successes and challenges with this group with an eye on incremental improvement by utilizing their feedback and their input. One AI group that we have yearly is a prep for the PSAT. We use prior tests to identify students who are near the index score that qualifies for designation as a National Merit Scholar. Two staff members, Mr. Exgoglin and Ms. Teresa Purudapp, lead these sessions during first Starting second quarter, our Advanced Placement teachers get extra time with their students during AI to help support students taking AP tests. This allows students, or this time allows students to grow in their ability to perform well on the AP tests and allows teachers additional time to prompt these results. This AP data shows growth in both the number of tests being taken over the course of the past few years, as well as the improved performance. AP scholars are students who have taken at least three AP tests during high school and achieved at least a three on each of those tests. Coincidentally, most colleges and universities offer college credit for an AP score of three or higher. For the spring of 2024, ONW had 78% of all of our AP tests taken in the building, score a three or higher. Each test and its corresponding percentage of three or higher is listed here. I'll point out a couple. One, the 97% in U.S. history, probably has one of the largest breadth of information and knowledge that you have to have to be successful on that test, and 30 out of 31 kids achieved a three. I will point out as well, 100% of our 23 English Literature AP test takers scored a three or higher. And then European History is another piece. Thirty-three students took that test. It is their first, European History is a sophomore-level class, so it's their first opportunity to really engage with an AP test, and to have 88% of our kids pass is just a fantastic number. Also during AI, we have a dedicated team of reading interventionists led by Ms. Cameron Hahn, an ELA teacher, who have provided intervention for students needing reading support. The ORF referenced here, and ORF is kind of always a funny term for me, is an oral reading fluency assessment that's administered one-on-one. The national average is to increase .5 words per week, and the numbers reflected there for 21, 22, 23, and 24 are over an eight-week period. So you can see that our ONW students are far outpacing the .5 words-per-week increase average. And this year, we've dipped a little bit, and the reason, or part of the reason we've dipped is we've expanded the group that we're addressing with our reading intervention to include English language learners, center-based resource students, and our deaf and hard-of-hearing This is ONW's fourth year of providing math intervention. Algebra I students are identified by their teachers for additional support during AI, kind of based on a "what I need now" approach, with current Algebra I being, the learning currently going on in Algebra I being reinforced during that AI time. We're proud of our growth and the percentage of our students successfully completing Algebra I. You can see 23, 24 school year, we're up to 91.5%. And to kind of give you an idea, the district baseline was 81.7% in the 2021 school year. In addition to the interventions mentioned, we also have peer-supported tutoring in a couple of different instances. Our challenge with AI and our challenge with academic intervention has been and continues to be connecting the students that we would say would be in the middle with the motivation and vision for valuing the ACT prep, the executive functioning skills, and other lessons that we provide for them. I've shared a number of highlights about ONW, but I think you'll get an even better idea of why ONW is such a special place from these students and staff.
The long-lasting friendships that I wouldn't have gotten at my home school.
Community. I like the lunch ladies, they're pretty chill.
ONW is a very close-knit community.
I love the teachers here at ONW, they're all very nice.
The long-lasting friendships and joy that ONW cheer has brought me.
ONW has a very welcoming community.
RFC.
The variety of clubs.
Physical education activities.
And what I like about ONW is that most of my classes have teachers that are really nice and welcoming and make learning really easy. Also, I definitely think I would have not met a lot of my lifelong best friends if I didn't go to ONW. And I really love the ECOM program as well, because I now, like, I really love journalism, and I don't think I would have found that passion if I didn't go here.
Olathe Northwest, positive social environment that has given me so many long-lasting connections.
ECOM.
The friendships I made through the sports I play here at ONW.
I love the people at ONW, I think they're great.
ONW is top-tier academics and also a fun and inclusive environment.
I really like how my teachers challenge me creatively.
I love the experiences here I wouldn't get to experience anywhere else.
I love ONW because we're one big happy family.
I love ONW because of the preparation it gives me for my future.
I really enjoy how loving and supportive each teacher is and how they're willing to work with you through anything.
The vibe, the opportunities.
The friendly environment.
Olathe Northwest varsity Raven Dance Team has given me a leg up on college athletics and given me a determination that will last a lifetime.
We appreciate the time and effort of Senior ECOM Student Madison Minor for that video, and I want to thank you for the invitation to share about ONW this evening. Thank you.
Board, do you have any questions? I have a question for you, Mr. Zook, related to the AP test results, which are really impressive, the number of people. I was curious if there are courses associated with all of these AP tests, or if there are some kids who opt to take a test, maybe without taking an AP course.
Yes, so any student can take any AP test, regardless of the classes that they've taken in high school. So I remember my very first school year, we had a group of four seniors who were off-the-chart smart, and we did not offer an economics class in the building at all. They all took the AP economics class, or test, at the end of their senior year, and they all scored a four, all four of them. So, yeah, you don't have to. The idea is that Advanced Placement curriculum and supports give students who take those classes a better chance at performing well on those assessments in May.
Ms. Steele.
So I know a few things about ONW from a personal perspective, but I do want to say, I think that what is so, I'm guessing, challenging, you're running a small city every day, is creating that environment, the climate, the culture, but then also that consistency over time. And we've had five kids, and one that I'm hoping that you'll graduate in a couple of years, still there. But the fifth was our foreign exchange son, Louis, from France. And when he first arrived at ONW, he came home on his first day of school and he said, "Julie, you will not believe it, it is like High School Musical." And when I hear you talk about all the clubs and all of the extracurriculars and the way that you're involving students, that is high school in Olathe. So, anyway, I know it's with a very robust, talented staff that you're doing that with, but thank you for all of that, yeah.
I appreciate that. I don't know about High School Musical. There's not a ton of dancing and singing, and get in the right places and see some dancing and singing. No, I mean, you're spot on. And I think one of the things that our staff does such a fantastic job of is that kids who, kids know that they're cared for and that there's an investment in a, really, a love from the adults taking care of those kids while they're there at that building, and it is a small city.
I can't agree more. And I think about the differences of the five kids I know very well, and then I think 1,960, is that what you said?
Yeah, we're in the ballpark.
The differences of those kids and that your staff every day is reaching each and every one of them, so.
Well, and like I said, I could probably come back, I'm not volunteering, but I could probably come back for several months and give you another 15 minutes for several months, and we would not hit any of the same topics over the next few months. It's just, there's so much, I mean, Julia, you're right, there's so much going on in any one of our five high schools, and it's really hard to encapsulate that into a small amount of time and not, hopefully I don't make too many people mad and leave too many people out. But like I said, I really appreciate the time and the opportunity.
Thanks.
Thank you for being here. We have another presentation, and Ms. Steele's going to make some comments prior to that.
Yeah, so I'm going to just take a minute and introduce our next speakers in our presentation. We have with us tonight Stuart Little and Mallory Lutes from Little Government Relations. And I'm pretty sure if you're thinking about making a joke about Stuart Little, he's probably heard all of them by now. Well, what I want to say briefly is, kind of just touch on what the board's commitment is to having a legislative liaison in Topeka. As some of you may know, our Kansas Legislature starts their session on Monday, and once that gets started, it's a total whirlwind in Topeka. Our district leadership and the board, we do what we can to keep a pulse, real-time, on what's happening in Topeka. But you know, as bills are flying left and right and center, if there is a center, and they're getting renamed and they're getting folded into other bills, it's really overwhelming to keep track. In addition, our public education funding formula is being rewritten. So everything we do here locally in Olathe really starts in Topeka. And as the second-largest school district in the state, it's vital that we are represented in Topeka, but also kept up to speed, real-time, with hearings and with the votes, so we can stay on top of the decisions that are being made. So I'm going to let Stuart and Mallory introduce themselves professionally and let you know a little bit about them. But the last thing I want to say is that our Legislative Committee conducted interviews that was with Mr. Babbitt and Ms. Reagan and myself. And what was clear to us in choosing Little Government Relations to be our liaison in Topeka is, you know, their expertise is profound, but also, you know, their balance in knowing when to lead us because of their expertise, but also knowing when they need to allow us to lead them and the way that we want to be represented there. I know we've made the right decision, and I'm excited to introduce you to both of them. So, thank you both.
Good evening. Stuart Little with Little Government Relations.
Mallory Lutes also with Little Government Relations. I appreciated the presentation on the AP testing scores. As somebody who was taking those 10 years ago, those are some really impressive numbers, so I just wanted to add that.
I have, correct, okay. I'm going to go through the slides, I don't have very many of them, and I'm not going to dig deeply into them, and you can use them as you see fit, but unlike other times, we will talk through this, take some questions, and then we'll be prepared, as you want us to during the coming legislative session, to come back and keep everyone updated, if that's the will of the superintendent and the board. We're happy to do that. That's part of, I think, helpful for us to get a back-and-forth with you all, and particularly because most of you don't know us, we're going to start with a little bit of background in the work we do, just so you understand what we're doing, and then we'll hit the highlights, what is it, five days from the beginning of the legislative session? So, Little Government Relations, I started in 2001. It is Mallory, myself, and another associate, Emma Montgomery. If you want to find out more about us, there's our website, they always need to be updated. I want to be open and transparent with everybody about the work we do. We are a contract lobbying firm. We do government relations work for wide-range clients, and you can find our clients there. We do a lot of governmental entity work, public education, local government, healthcare field, and then we do some business organizations work. Also, just to make sure you understand, and the interview committee was aware of this, we do represent Shawnee Mission School District, as well as the Southeast Kansas Educational Service Center, Green Bush, for those of you that may have contact and interaction with them as well. So I will hit the highlights in terms of the 2025 session, a couple of things that are going to be significant and have some impact on everything, but on public education in a couple of ways. We are going to have a very accelerated legislative session. We're probably going to cut a month off the legislative session. Instead of ending in May, we're going to end pretty early in April. Part of the idea is that legislative leadership wants to utilize Mondays and Fridays, which used to be travel days, and then you'd get three days of work, so we're going to have more work done during the legislative session. It is also an attempt to adhere to what is the traditional 90-day legislative session, which became very flexible, they were 90 to 120 sometimes. So, we're going to start early, the start dates are there, but it will go very quickly, and everything will go very quickly. You're going to have about, for any piece of legislation, for the most part, you're going to have three to four weeks to get it passed out of one chamber, three weeks to get it passed out of another and have it passed. The budget process is going to be different as well. Taking a lesson from some other states, the legislature made a move this fall to adopt what is essentially a legislative budget. The governor has the responsibility of presenting the budget, the legislature appropriates the funds. Some states, and Kansas is now trying this for the first time, is going to create a legislative budget, which means they're taking the information that comes from state agencies, that was passed on to, from, to the governor's budget staff, and looking at that and creating their own baseline budget. So it's going to be based on the last, the previous year, and they're going to have that budget introduced, it probably will be introduced on Monday. We will begin having hearings on the budget going forward, and K-10 funding is part of K-12, 10, cut off two grades, top of the bottom, K-12. So they will have the budget bill, they will begin budget hearings, and for most of the budget, it's going to be the base that agencies have, and then if there are enhancements, those will have to be added by the legislature. The governor is going to introduce a budget, she'll do that on Wednesday or Thursday morning of next week, but the legislature, and then that was drafted, written up as a bill. This year, the legislature is going to take what the governor puts in the budget over the baseline, and those are recommendations. So instead of starting with the governor's budget, and do we want to add things or take things out, the legislature is going to have a base budget, and then the legislature is going to determine whether we add it in or not. What that means and why it's kind of significant is that, say you're going to add the billion to whatever for public education, including all the funds, that if you're going to do enhancements, if you want to do 75 million in special education like you did last year, the governor put it in the budget, and so the political battle was, do we pull it out? And do we get in trouble for pulling it out? Or do we, now the conversation is, are we going to add it in? And it just reframes how the legislature will talk about what you add. You want state employee pay raises, you know? If the governor recommended that, there's an inclination to say, yeah, maybe that's okay, we'll see. But now there's an affirmative act to add all these things into the budget. It's going to make adding money a lot that the legislature may not be keen on very different. Big picture, I'll just hit this, I don't necessarily come and talk to you guys about politics, but politics matters. There are changes in the majority party in both the House and the Senate here that reflect a larger supermajority in the House and the Senate. What that means for folks in public education and in other areas is that the ability to defeat overriding a governor's veto, or the ability to pass constitutional amendments, are easier in both the House and the Senate. You used to just have to find one Republican in the House or two in the Senate, but now you've got to find more. And so what that does is it makes, it enhances the will of the majority party acting in unison to accomplish what they may want to do. Key committees, I don't normally, you know, put a slide like this up, but there are three new chairs of the education committees in the legislature. That's important because everybody that is going to be hearing bills, both policy bills and funding bills, are going to be new, not necessarily new to the process, but new in their positions. One of the things that's significant, and I think of some use for us going forward into this session, I made a note... into this session, I made a note on the right side of this presentation for loosely described as the metro area, Johnson County, Wyandotte County, for legislators who are on these key education committees. And that's in part to shine a little light on the folks that need to be communicated with, also to note places where we have, you all have members that can be engaged on these topics, and that may make it a little more significant to reach out to those folks as a whole, particularly when we start talking about finance issues. If you're interested in the full list of committee assignments, they're on that, they're in the link as well. So going into the 25 session, the K-12 Education Funding Task Force is kind of the long-term project that will go until the 27th of, or till February or June 30th of 2027, the current formula sunset. So the legislature could, legislature could extend the sunset and change nothing, or they could write a new formula and get that passed. I think one has to observe what the legislature has attempted to pass for the last two or three or four years, to understand that there is a will of a majority number of people in the legislature to do something different, make some changes to the formula. So that's coming. I would also note that the election of the State Board of Education will have an impact on public education in the state of Kansas. Their board members will be sworn in Monday, as are the legislatures and the legislators. There is a possibility that with a change in the board, there could be a change in the Commissioner of Education. And the relationship between the State Board of Education and the legislature could be impacted by some of those changes in the state board. It'll be interesting to watch. This is kind of a laundry list of people that do the work that Mallory and I do, of some of the topics that we're kind of keeping an eye on going into this session. We never know what's going to pop up, but we've seen a lot of things over the last few years. Obviously, the long-term funding, probably going to be dealt with by the task force. The special education, the funding, the formula, how we count, how much the legislature, how much you all in school districts are backfilling for what the legislature doesn't do, all those things are going to be part of the, part of that, as well as there's some potential issues as we're getting into open enrollment. That new policy that the legislature passed related to movement in special ed, which would move some, which is a parental right to make those decisions, but to go into some transition, particularly in the, in the special education area, and shifting some costs or moving to different locations. Funding for at-risk and at-risk policies, student achievement, all those things are going to be back. And we're, we've begun over the last three or four years to have to start managing and addressing constraints, restrictions, under the, described as guidance sometime, but on spending at-risk dollars, how we use them, those kind of things. And that's something, those are the kinds of things to watch out, getting written into the formula when they're, when that'll be happening again. Expansion of the non-public school scholarship program, vouchers, all those kinds of things. Even coming up now in some other states is reconsideration of allowing local school boards to control granting charters for charter schools. And when you think about the state board changing, that may be something that happens as well. We're going to have ongoing conversations about the legislature, and I'm not saying we're going to do this, but this is what the legislature is going to do, and we're going to have to keep an eye on and, and talk about as necessary. But parental participation, curriculum, educational materials, suspension and expulsion policies are sort of moving around. There's a little bit of the open enrollment questions there. In terms of how people are wondering how vacant seats were calculated, we're going to probably have a hearing about that. And I would note, some of these issues are linked into terms of local control, about funding, parental engagement, all of these things. I think many of these things that, that were passed in the last few years, described as making these kinds of adjustments, have a tremendous impact on the responsibility and burden of what the administration here has to do. And I think that's one of those things that's oftentimes overlooked, is that the more energy you tie up in tracking whether $1 in at-risk money went to one classroom that had more than an at-risk kid, they're not doing all of these other cool things that you guys all heard about. So that's the end of a very brief overview. If we come back and talk, it will be dreary, slugging through legislation and those kind of things. But we are happy to answer any questions, if you might have any tonight.
Ms. Steele.
Stuart, I just have one question for you. I tend to watch on the live stream from the legislature. Will the task force also be livestreamed? Will that be?
It is, I don't know if it, yes, it, there's no way they could do that without livestreaming. I don't know specifically if it's subject to Corea and Co., and those kind of things, but yeah.
Okay.
Ms. Reagan.
I just wanted to say that I'm looking forward to navigating this session with you, helping us figure out and stay in touch and in tune with what's going on. Things in Topeka move so fast. And I mentioned the legislature a lot in my board comments, and one of the best things we can do to protect our district is to help our constituency, the families who live in the Olathe school attendance area, to be very aware of how the decisions that are made in Topeka impact our community. So Stuart and Mallory, I am so looking forward to making sure that we can keep our community informed, so they can advocate to their legislators as well.
Anyone else, board? Thank you for being here this evening and for the information. Nice to meet both of you. We do have one more brief presentation, some comments actually, before public comments. Mr. Pelangi, I mentioned earlier that we wanted to make sure we recognized a number of people who have been working very hard this week, and so Mr. Pelangi is going to help us with that. Thank you, Travis, for being here.
No, thank you. I appreciate the opportunity to boast about our over 300 Operation Service Center team members that we had as we went through the challenge of this historical snow event we just went through this past week. So Dr. Jager asked if I'd come up and kind of talk about our, what we just went through and kind of highlight some of the team members that we had that worked on this. As everybody knows, we started getting some ice on Saturday, but prior to that, we were able to get salt and sand down, or salt down in our lots and our sidewalks in anticipation for that. And then across the district through Sunday, we averaged anywhere from 10 to 13 inches of snow across the district, which is the most that we've had in quite some time. And so just to kind of equate that in some references, typically for two to three inches of snow on an event, it'll take the Operation Service Center roughly about eight hours to clear that from our lots and sidewalks. If we, four to five inches, it'll be roughly around 10 hours. So having 13 inches was, was quite the opportunity that we had. So we, we started on Monday around noon. We gave the city enough time to at least make some passes on the streets, so our Operation Service Center team members could, that were doing the snow plows, could make it to our office safely. It took us about two hours to dig us out of the Operation Service Center, to be able to get our snow plows out. We have about 24 trucks that go across the district, and we have teams in the east and the west. And then I'd be remiss if I didn't thank Houston Contracting that had helped assist us during this event. There are on-call snowplow contractors that work on our high schools. We asked them to also complete two middle schools, and they also assisted with DS bus lines at the transportation center as well. And we used roughly around 200 tons of salt for this event, and we plowed about 6.7 million square feet of parking lot and drivelanes, which is about 153 acres. And we like to talk sports at the service center, so that equated to about 116 football fields that we cleared. And then after that, roughly on Tuesday and beginning Wednesday, we brought in our over 240 custodial team members to each of the buildings to start clearing entrances, sidewalks. We had a lot of areas that had snowdrifts that were about three to four inches high that were blocking required fire exits that we had to clear as well. And then we started on the primary sidewalks. I know we, we weren't quite able to get to all of them, but we have a pretty good list on what we consider primary and secondary. So we focused on the primaries at first, and we were able to get those in shape for classes that we had today, and then started to work on the secondary sidewalks as well. So we roughly have about 49 miles of sidewalks that we have to clear. So it was a large team effort to be able to have school today, and we felt like that we had a nice day. But that didn't stop us from going back out and hitting those secondary sidewalks. We were also having some, some areas that we knew we had to kind of address as well, because with that amount of snow, we had to put them in places and be able to go back and readdress those, and we started doing that today. And then we get the opportunity to prep for the event that we're currently in right now. And so our teams were out there after school was let out today to be able to go salt the lots and the sidewalks in anticipation for what we're getting ready to have. So I'd like to thank our Director of Operations, Brandon Griesen, our Director of Custodial Services, Hassan Yexman, for their leadership during this process. And it's a lot to coordinate, but I felt like we did a very good job to be able to have school today. So thank you.
Board, any questions or comments? Thank you for your time this evening and for also the leadership the last few days.
Thank you.
Appreciate, yeah. And it's helpful to know the backstory, what's going on, and the expansive nature that you're dealing with. So thank you.
Appreciate it.
At each regular meeting, the Board of Education reserves limited time for individuals to address the board. We ask that your comments be germane that is related to the business this board effectuates. Noncompliance may result in the president interrupting to redirect. We request that individual speakers limit their comments to five minutes. The clerk will monitor the time and notify the speaker when the five-minute time limit has expired. Please direct your comments to the board and not the guests or staff. If a response is appropriate, the president will respond to refer to another individual. In an effort to respect privacy, we ask that speakers refrain from discussing personal complaints involving individual staff members or students. Audience disruption is also not permitted. Those speaking are advised that public comments are videotaped, recorded for broadcast on the district's educational access channel, and audiotape recorded as a matter of public record. Individuals addressing the board should come to the podium at the front of the room and state your name, city and state, and relationship to the district. Thank you.
This evening, we have one speaker, Patty Lanter.
Hopefully, I will not lose my entire speech this time. That was not good. Anyway, tonight I am speaking on trust. But before I start, I just wanted to say one thing regarding tonight's topics. Regarding the AP classes, AP government does not make sense to be taught in the fall when the AP exam cannot be taken until May. And also regarding the AP permissions at ONW, just last year, students were not able to take the AP physics tests that they desired to take if they were not engineering students. Also regarding the schedule change, we did not hear how this has impacted the grades of first-period chemistry or calculus classes. I'd be interested to see how kids are doing when they have to be there 20 minutes earlier. Sleep is precious. I recall being told by an administrator that this year's seniors will not reap the benefit of the schedule change. I wonder what he meant by that. I anticipate there is more to come on this. Okay. It does not feel good to have to say things out loud to adults that they should have learned long ago. We cannot place trust in an audit of last month that is designed to find accounting errors, not ethical dilemmas and violations. Financial audits do not show waste. That's not their goal. Uncovering waste is done through analysis when one actually wants to save money or clean up issues. Do districts care to find ways when they can just lobby for more money using taxpayer funds to pay the lobbyist to get more money from the taxpayer? Hmm. There is, we heard from the lobbyists tonight, if only it was a board and administration desire to switch gears and fix what is wrong, rather than continually spending more and more and asking for more and more. What you may see as political is in reality a matter of lack of ethics. Do we have an ethics policy anymore? It takes less money to do things right on the front end, instead of constantly overspending and asking for more in an attempt to repair, and name any way, that which has gone off track. In the case of assessments, due to poor student results in literacy, the state superintendent has decided to reduce the bar, or he's appealing to the board to do that, instead of focusing on improving student achievement. In the ONW data presented tonight, we saw that reading intervention is still increasingly necessary. In just the first semester, we have 70 referrals for intervention. There's a great deal of improvement needed here, since this refers to high school students. How did we get here? Here are some examples of how trust has been eroded in our district. Continually growing budgets at the administrative salary level while cutting hourly low-paid staff. Trust is also eroded while allowing extremist political organizations to fund and run teacher training with goals of transforming education, in the words of Becky Pringle, into something it was never meant to be, activist training. There's evidence of this in our own district Google Classroom. Temporary evidence, only accessible to students until removed by the teacher, and parents are none the wiser. Also, playing switcheroo with principals, nine announced this past month, especially when they are effective in their role and do not wish to move, or do we shuffle when there's something to hide? The history of past the trash, moving teachers with shady activities to other positions until it can no longer be hidden, and police must get involved. The audits last month, oh, I already said that. We can destroy a perfectly good boardroom to rubble, spending taxpayers' money to rebuild what was not broken, yet cannot give minimal supply money to teachers, vital, supplies vital to specific instruction. For example, paint for painting class, ingredients for cooking class. We can spend tons and tons on garbage programs and top-heavy administrative salaries and bloat, yet can't provide petty cash-level supply money to teachers in the classroom. Should they just use YouTube instead? And I do understand capital expenditure versus operating, but waste of taxpayer funds is wrong regardless. Instead of continually asking for money, perhaps start from the bottom to prove the need of every cent of every budget, as any viable business would do. Our class does need supplies, cooking class does need groceries. No child needs extraneous social engineering transformation. No one needs explicit materials disguised in diversity wrappers. And administrative raises do not help students. Are you aware that there was another massive data breach, this time affecting students and teachers? The district has decided to continue contracting with Power School in the agenda for management of budgeting payroll and employee information. Teacher data was taken. This is not just Kansas, this is across the country. They admit they were compromised in an attack with student and teachers' personal data, including social security numbers and medical info stolen. Power School said, we do not anticipate it was shared. Really? I see in future action items, there's a listing for an all-encompassing platform for K through 12. Do we really need more platforms? Shouldn't we protect what we have?
Thank you, Ms. Lanter.
Thank you.
Item 6.01 is an executive session. I would welcome a motion to go into executive session, and we will need 20 minutes, please. Mr. Boyd.
I move that the board go into the executive session for the purpose of discussing personnel matters for non-elected personnel in Tacoma, and that the board returns to the regular meeting at 20 minutes, 7:35.
Motion by Mr. Boyd, second by Ms. Johann.
Mrs. Steele?
Yes.
Mrs. Reagan?
Yes.
Mr. Boyd?
Yes.
Ms. Johann?
Yes.
Mr. Kuhn?
Yes.
Mr. Babbitt?
Yes.
Dr. Yurkovich?
Yes. Motion passes, 7-0. We will return at 7:35. We will return at 7:35.